Good evening. It is now 7:02 PM. We're going to open a public hearing. Our first public hearing, we have two scheduled for this evening, is on amending code section 107 regarding registration of vacant buildings. Public hearing is officially open. And we have nobody on the list who has signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is there anybody present that would like to speak regarding code amendment for vacant buildings and just did not have the opportunity? If so, we'll ask you to use the microphone at the podium. Second call, is there anybody present who wants to speak about vacant buildings? I haven't, oh, no. We were close, we almost had a speaker. Maybe if I do a third call, is there anybody who would like to speak regarding amending the code for vacant buildings? Hearing none, we will call the hearing closed. And just as a matter of point of information, what we're looking to do is subscribing a fee for buildings that are vacant and are not being maintained. Encourage property owners to be good neighbors. Second public hearing is on amending Article 11, Sections 31 and 32, which would prohibit turns from Groton Avenue onto Otter Creek Place. We will call the public hearing officially open. And our first speaker, Joe Schaefer. Not sure if you know, but the podium and the microphone.
Good evening, thank you, Joe Schaefer, Courtland. This is an issue that I had brought to the attention of the council a long time ago, then the resident brought it to you in early or late fall, I believe, again, on the issue of safety. And I was delighted that she came before you to say that it was a problem, that there were people speeding down the street, and she was concerned, she lives at the top, or I consider the top of the street toward Groton Avenue. I'm really pleased on your resolution that it says prohibiting turns from Groton onto Otter Creek. It doesn't say which way, whether you're going east or whether you're going west, it just says turns. As one who uses that street frequently, because I live just the other side of it, I do come up, I notice always, it's always listed as a single lane road. On both sides, it says a single lane, which it just requires why there is no yellow stripe up the middle of the street, because it is supposed to be a single lane street. If you then prevent people from turning from Groton, it does what I've always asked it to be, which is a one-way street. You have defined it that way when you prohibit turns from Groton going south and west on Groton. And it really makes, in essence, that street a one-way street. I'm delighted, I think it's worthwhile. It's a safety issue, it's one that, I'm sorry, this is perpetual. If you're turning from Groton, from Otter Creek, onto Groton going east, it's an easy turn. You can see the traffic involved. But if you're coming from, let's say, Burn Dairy, it is a long point, it makes you go out and then have to come back in. I can't tell you how many times I've almost been T-boned by someone making that turn. So I'm delighted that you're doing this. And I realize that the people, they have concerns who live on that street or have property in that street, that it would be a one-way street. A one-way street promotes safety, it promotes ease of traffic, a whole bunch of really positive things. And sometimes, there's a penalty to be paid if you live on that. People on Pleasant Street have the same idea. Part of Pleasant is one-way up the hill for the same reason, when it was done, not to have people make turns from Court Street into Pleasant back and forth. You live with it, you learn to live with it, it creates a safe environment. And so I'm really pleased to see, I would like to say, that I would like to see it listed at face at one point as a one-way street. That would make clarification, people would know they could turn from Broadway onto that street to go up to Groton, but not the other way down. When you do that, it makes it one-way, label it one-way, and everybody will be safe and happy and avoid accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And for a clarification, I think I understand what you mean about one-way, it would still be two-way, you just cannot turn on from Groton Avenue. Traffic can still continue up and down Otter Creek both ways.
How are you going to get in if you can, maybe turn to Groton?
If you're leaving your home, you can turn out either way.
Yes. So, Joe, thank you, but it is not one-way, cars can travel up and down, but they cannot access it from Groton.
I agree with the question, I understand what people who live there would understand exactly what it is. People live on Pleasant one-way, you get used to it, just a lot, and you go one-way. It takes you all of two and a half minutes more in your life than save life.
Our second speaker, Penny Pozella.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I understand the need to limit traffic on Otter Creek. It's always been a one-lane, two-way road. I know that the police department had done a study for speeders up and down the street. I've lived on, in Courtland, on and off all my life. I've never, ever encountered an issue on Otter Creek, traffic going both directions. I've never encountered heavy pedestrian traffic, even when college is in session. There is a sidewalk that pedestrians are able to use. I do agree with eliminating the right-hand turn up of Groton onto Otter Creek, heading eastbound. That corner's always been rough, and it, to block traffic, turning right, I agree with, turning left. Westbound on Groton Ave., I do not agree with. A lot of people avoid the intersection at Townley and Groton. It's a very difficult and tight corner. There's two lanes, one to turn left, this is headed westbound, and one to go straight. The left-turn lane is very tight, if there's a big vehicle, they can't sit safely there and have traffic move properly. If Otter Creek is turned into a one-way, what's going to be done to improve the corner of Townley and Groton Ave.? I think there should be a pedestrian study done with how many college students or local residents traverse that street on a daily basis. I go up and down around four times a day. I've never seen an increase in pedestrian traffic. A lot of the college students are not headed up Otter Creek, because if they go up to Otter Creek headed towards Broadway, they're going, there's housing up there, they're not going to class. Most of them head up Stevenson Street. So I don't think pedestrian traffic is a safety issue. People just need to be cognizant of people on the street. It doesn't matter where you are, if you're on Main Street, Groton Ave., you need to be careful. And I believe if it goes one-way, people are going to come from Broadway Townley, speeding up to that corner, because now they don't have to watch for traffic coming the other direction. I think it creates a safety issue, not improves one. Thank you.
Can I ask, do you live on Otter Creek?
I do not live on Otter Creek. I grew up on the West End, I live near the college now, and I-
You just use that road a lot?
Absolutely, I used it when I was a kid. And I still do, to avoid the corner of the intersection, Groton Ave. and Townley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Jim Place.
Good evening, I live on Pine Crest, which is right off of Otter Creek. And I've lived on Graham Ave. and Prospect Terrace and Tompkins, so I've lived in the area my entire life. But my biggest concern is that there's a substantial amount of traffic that goes southwest on Otter Creek. If that traffic is funneled through Groton Ave. and Townley, there are certain times a day, and in fact, almost any time of the day, it will tie up that intersection. Right now, and I, again, drive through the intersection of Groton and Townley on a regular basis, it's rare you see somebody making a left-hand turn. In fact, when the light cycles by itself, often, nobody's making a turn. But if you eliminate people going down Otter Creek, you're going to have people turning every cycle of that light. And it's going to back up traffic coming into the city, and it frequently backs up past Melvin, and even further than that during peak hours, you start getting people making left-hand turns. And of course, you know, when there's heavy traffic on Broadway and Groton Ave., that's also when there's heavy traffic going southwest on Otter Creek. Adding that much traffic is going to create a real mess. I understand issues with Otter Creek, but my priorities would be, if you're concerned about people driving on the sidewalk there, why not start with a DPW painting a white line along the edge of the sidewalk? If you're concerned about people driving on the sidewalk, people making left-hand turns are the ones that get over on the sidewalk, so that they can see on Groton Ave. easier. Eliminating left-hand turns out of Otter Creek makes much more sense to solve that problem. But again, my greatest concern is that traffic will be tied up. And, you know, it's hard not to agree that there's issues with people, pedestrians, there are more pedestrians in that area now than there were. But I don't think you're solving, I think you're going to create a bigger problem with the traffic at Groton and Townley that you're going to solve by changing Otter Creek.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker, Christine Place.
I live up, excuse me, I have a cold today. I live up on Pine Crest Drive, I've lived there since 1981, and I agree with somewhat of what people have said, and I disagree with some of what they said. The neighborhood has changed since 1981. There is a huge amount of student traffic coming up and down the hill now. I don't know why someone would say there isn't, but there is. And they do not understand, A, that you walk on the left-hand side of the road facing traffic on the shoulder. It's also the staff at the college is walking up and down on the wrong side of the streets, too. And Otter Creek has a sidewalk for only part of the way, and then it stops. And I can't, yes, it's only on the, on the east side, and it's only for the first couple of houses. After that, there's no sidewalk. And I can't tell you how many times people are walking three and four abreast, or walking their baby carriage in the middle of the road, with their back to me, which is a big concern, because I don't want to hit them, and they don't, they have their headphones in, they don't even know you're coming. And if you go around them, they look at you like, "Oh, what's your problem, lady?" Or if you tap your horn to let them know that you're in the vicinity, it's like, [BLEEP], excuse my language. But that's, and so, it is a problem with the pedestrian traffic. I think that eliminating left-hand turns from Groton Ave. onto Otter Creek is a good idea, because if you're coming from Main Street and you're in the left-hand turn lane at Otter Creek, it makes the people coming towards you from Burn Dairy, they look at you like, "Oh, why are you in my lane?" And if they go, "Oh, I guess I have to move over," because there's no warning that there, it suddenly becomes a two-lane now. So there are, and Jim brings up a good point, and some other people did, about the traffic patterns. I don't know if any discussion has been had, because I haven't been to the other meetings, about change in traffic patterns, and what the DPW, A, what information they have. It's not about speeders, it should be more the number of cars that are actually on Otter Creek, and which direction they come from, and at what time of day. And if they can do something to enlarge the intersection to make it safer, as other people have pointed out, so that you can safely handle the increased load of left-hand turners from any direction. So I have no problem with limiting turns onto the street. I think that's long awaited, but there are repercussions when you do that, that it's a snowball effect, and you don't want to create problems elsewhere. And you need the data to figure out how you best address it. And I don't know if anyone's done any traffic study patterns for the area recently. So, that's all.
Thank you. Angela Galati.
Oh, sorry. Hello, obviously, I'm Angela, I'm the one that brought this up in August, and I am happy that there is movement being made, obviously. I'm hoping this goes through. I hear what everybody's saying, that it could cause some other problems, but I think, is it Chris Bistocci, Bistoche, is that his? So when he was at the last council meeting, and he did bring up specifics about what the road is rated for daily, you know, saying that there are over 1,000 cars a day, and it's almost 400, that's a problem. The fact that there's nowhere, there's no way to widen the road, there's nothing else you can do on Otter Creek. Now, I don't know what the limitations would be on Groton Ave. to widen things, to make like a wider turn, to deal with what you're saying, that it could block people back, that there, literally, you've got a creek on one side, and you've got houses right there. They cannot legally widen the road, there's, they can't do anything. So really, the only choice is to go a different way, because there's too much traffic. And I understand people saying that they drive through a couple times a day. I live there, I watched the older woman down the road just the other day, she was trying to turn right onto Otter Creek, and this guy comes around, barreling from the corner in a big souped-up blazer. It was kind of a nice day, he had his window down, he's screaming every obscenity he can at her, and all she's trying to do is turn the corner. And this is like a daily occurrence. If you're not going fast enough on that road, people will get right behind you and ride you. So this woman, I'm not sure how old she is, but she's older, and nobody needs that. And he's riding her and revving his engine, following her the whole way down, she's trying to turn in her driveway, and I'm standing there like on the side, just watching this from my front porch, like, "You've got to be kidding me." This guy slams on his brakes and does like this really nice swerve, and tires are squealing, and I can hear him swearing at her from down, like, he's just screaming. You've got people that are almost getting hit in the intersection, because, you know, the students, like, they don't listen, they're not paying attention, they do walk, three, four. One o'clock in the morning, there's still cars coming through there. And now there's students that are drinking, that are having a good time, and they are not paying attention. There's kids that ride through on skateboards through all hours of the night. It's, it's pretty crazy, it's very unsafe. I really appreciate that you guys are putting this up for a vote. I'm hoping it goes through. I understand that it could cause problems in other areas, but I think that may be something that has to be dealt with. Because this cannot, there's no room to change Otter Creek other than this, there's nothing, I don't, I mean, Chris Bistoche, he went through everything. He was pretty thorough last time he was here. I mean, I just don't see any other, there's no alternatives. So, that's it.
Thank you, Angela. That is everybody who has signed up to speak. So we'll call the public hearing officially closed. And we will now call the common council meeting to order, this is February 4 of 2020. Ask everybody, please rise if you're able, to the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have the opportunity for public comments, and we ask that comments are to be limited to three minutes in length, they are directed to council about issues that the city council can directly work upon. Our first speaker, Mekka Nagel.
Good evening. I'm back today again, calling for some consciousness raising for our environment, specifically reminding you all that we live on a sole-source aquifer, and that we need to be good stewards. The EPA has considered it a most critical one in the northeastern region. And one of the steps you could take is to ban all pesticide spraying on city property, you know, in terms of lawn management. And one, you know, would suggest not spending our tax monies, dollars, giving it to Monsanto or others, that harm the environment, as is proven by countless studies. Another aquifer issue is actually the fireworks that we have, and that's usually not brought up in consideration with the environment and our precious water. But if you actually look at the substances of these fireworks, they're full of heavy metals, lead, cadmium, and studies shown after fireworks display show the area full of these contaminations. And this stuff goes eventually into our aquifer. However, folks like the fireworks, I come from a country where that's a huge occurrence, all of our neighbors use to do it on New Year's Eve, and you can't stick your nose out, because the air is full of lead and other stuff, it's so toxic. So we are looking at, this, I'm speaking on behalf of United Voices, we're looking at a compromise to see that we can at least get the noiseless fireworks, if the city commits to permit folks to do that, because so many populations are very vulnerable and are impacted by these big booms. The animals are one population, that tends to be forgotten, but I'm also thinking of our veterans of war, folks who suffer from seizure, epilepsy. There's countless studies that show the detrimental aspect of the noises of fireworks. And we're happy to supply them with you, for you, if you like. And there's also, fireworks are purchased legally in Pennsylvania, and then used here quite illegally. So this is an issue of code enforcement, and right now, it's a violation. Some folks in UBC feel it should probably rise to the level of misdemeanor, or some ways of deterring folks, including folks, as we noticed, from law enforcement who set them off illegally. That we would like, you know, better compliance there. And Governor Cuomo allows us, the city, to have coordinances that are stricter than what the state standard is. So, you know, please think of that, and specifically work with the college where I work, to constrain their use. I know Alana Affairs likes to do their displays, but it considers itself a green, green college, I beg to differ. Again, I want to remind you, last time I came to argue for pollinator gardens, I still argue for that, and I'd like you to put that on the docket. And we think you're fine for folks like me who do not care for mowing our lawns, because we actually like our insects to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mekka. Our next speaker, Jim Place.
Oh, I think I signed up for the wrong one.
And then Christine.
I signed up for the wrong one, but I do want to invite- I didn't sign up, and I have a one-second comment. I submitted a proclamation from the League of Women Voters. I believe it went to you, and I appreciate it if you read it, commemorating the 100th anniversary of the League and the 19th Amendment of the Constitution, allowing women to vote. Thank you.
You just stole Katie's thunder.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't really come prepared, but then I thought, oh, I should have. In concert with all that's happening with Otter Creek and Pine Crest, because it's the same narrow road, Pine Crest is only 18 feet wide at its widest, and a normal road is 20 feet wide, plus the shoulders. So it's very narrow with no shoulders. Please, could the request be made to the DPW that they put up a sign, and I can tell you the number of the law, New York State law actually says that pedestrians must walk on the left-hand side of the road when there is no sidewalk facing traffic on the shoulder. If we could just put some signs up along Otter Creek and Pine Crest to remind people, I don't think that it's, they're doing it on purpose, I think they're just oblivious and aren't aware that it would be better. And since it's already a New York State law, you're just putting up a sign that's the New York State law. So, that, I think, would help with a lot of things, because people aren't malicious in how they walk, they're just oblivious in how they walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Quagmudge.
Hello, council? I have two things to say, so I've got to be fast, I only have three minutes. Okay. I'm creating an entity called Patchwork, P-A-T-C-H, People Acting Together for Community Health. And if you look at the definition of a patchwork, it is composed of miscellaneous and incongruous parts. So really, it's about bringing together people and entities for community health, and it's really just a network of resources. So I'm working with Deacon Pat Kinney over at Grace and Holy Spirit, a building that has been since its inception, an incredible place that reaches out to the community in a million and one ways. So there's a lot of things they'd like to have happen, but they don't necessarily have a whole lot of resources, so I'm creating that network. Where and when, it'll simply be through conversations, emails, any entities that we get information from. Why, to improve the individual community health, to accentuate Courtland as a preferred destination to live and to play. And how are we doing this? Just by connecting people and entities to tackle issues, disseminate pertinent research, and then it'll be without any political commentary. Thank you. For those of you who don't know quilting, that's a nine patch, and we happen to have nine categories, so it works well. We want to look at individual physical health, mental health, financial and economic health. We also want to do community health, community history and heroes, and community promotions. We also want to take on poverty versus being poor, helping the impoverished understand how to make better choices. Diversity and understanding, and then sustainable living and environment, and all of that is held together with one thread, and that's communication, thus the resource of this network. Second thing. Green Bag Ladies, Fat Sheet. There is a local volunteer group of all genders and identities that are selling and distributing free cloth bags to those who need them. We are at the University, yeah, University, United Presbyterian Church of 25, Church Street, 10 to noon on the first and third Saturday of each month, and the Green Bag Ladies, although that's the name we take anybody, so, is an educational project with an effort to just inform people about the community and how plastic bags are a potential problem. Little facts, maybe not known, the Green Bag Ladies actually started in Denver, Colorado. A woman started out of her concern in 2008 for plastic bags, and as a fact, on the ocean, and you may have seen a lot of that. But the chapter here in Courtland started in 2017. Worldwide, over 121,000 bags have been distributed. Here in Courtland, since 2017, we've distributed over 1,300 bags. If you want to donate, yes, 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 we'll take free fabric, free thread, unless it's really old, because then it gets brittle, money will be used to purchase more fabric. And the contact is greenbags.cortland@gmail.com. If you want to, check out the Green Bag Ladies blog spot, where you can see the international efforts, and there are thousands of them in every country practically. So, last thing, I'm offering you all bags, your choice.
Do you also have the contact information for both of these entities?
So, Green Bags-
I just said that, but it was pretty quick.
Sorry, I was going to let you- Sorry, I was going to let you look at one.
Thank you. We'll put it on there. I'm telling you, you're too slow.
Great.
Great?
Yep, thank you. I'll take the floor. On my way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, you ran the bottom of that. Katie, ran the bottom.
Thank you.
Which one goes best with my pleasure?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
So, Patchwork, I'm going to contact you, sorry. Warning, I'm contacting you.
Thank you so much, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie. That wraps up our public comments for the evening. Next up, we have ward reports, starting with the first.
All right. So I've heard some concerns about traffic as far as where Yonge Street meets Calhoun. There's no traffic signal there, and I've heard about several near misses as far as accidents and essentials. So that is being brought forward to DPW and for the board to take a look at that area and see if we can find a yield sign up or identify some signage for that. The other thing I wanted to mention, what else? If you turn it off.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that this is the first week of glass-only recycling program. I have heard a lot of confusion about the setup, and driving through the first ward, you see a lot of recycling bins stowed out. So just as a reminder, with the changes to the recycling program in the county, the city is collecting glass only the first week of the month with our recycling, and then subsequently is collecting co-mingled recyclables. So I just want to remind folks that if you had your recycling out and it was not collected, take it in, it'll be collected next week if it was improperly sorted, if you had your co-mingled gathering. So, thank you.
From the second ward.
Second ward, I want to read a quote concerning shoveling sidewalks and the ordinance that we passed. "I appreciate these changes. I hope that police and fire can take down the addresses of violators as they go around the city. It would be nice to not rely just on the public reporting." So, a lot of positive reactions to that change in our sidewalk, snow on the sidewalk shoveling policy. There are concerns about very large potholes. The potholes that have been repaired are popping out when the, when the streets warm up, and we're having a lot of the freeze and thaw cycle, so it's a problem. And they are filling them as quickly as they can. The DPW is filling them as quickly as they can. If you have an immediate concern, call the DPW or your council member. And there's a concern in the second ward about a house on West Court Street that was sold and is being advertised as a sorority house on Facebook and as an event space. And the city's aware of this problem and looking into it. I also wanted to say that it was the first week of glass pickup, and someone else reported that if you are having problems with scam phone calls, and Verizon is your carrier, Verizon will block spam calls. And I believe Spectrum will as well. But check that, because it wouldn't be nice just to have them out of your hair. That's it from the second ward.
Third ward.
I have a few issues here, Mayor. I had some phone calls, I was contacted about the sidewalk change, and they were very happy with that, to see that. At the same time, they're very frustrated with the condition of some of the sidewalks. Some of them are in such shabbles, you could hardly call them sidewalks. It's an issue we have to deal with, and I think it's been kicked down the road long enough. This, some people suggested that at the very least have DPW black top it over this summer so these people can walk on the sidewalks. And that's what it's come to. So that issue, as people are frustrated with that. Also, right across the street from the third ward is that, is that house on West Court, and people are concerned about what's going on there. And are someone literally thumbing their noses at our zoning regulations with that? Or are they just jerking chains? What are they doing that? To put that on Facebook was so brazen, that I cannot believe that we're just going to let that stand. And people are upset about that. And on the other side, I would also like to remind people, the first full week of the month, it's glass only. And I know I'll make that mistake myself. We have to remember, we've had probably 20 years of muscle memory with recycling the way it's been, so some of us are going to be forgetting. So we just have to keep repeating, repeating, first full week of the month, it's glass only. So, I think we're trying. That's it.
Fifth ward.
In the fifth ward, we're feeling quite a few questions about the sidewalks, and people are happy that these new guidelines have been put into place. But also, there've been questions about, you know, how, how we follow them through. And there's also been calls on the recycling issues. And overall, I've just been reminding people that whenever there's change, it takes time to work through those changes. And everyone nationwide and beyond nationwide are struggling with these issues. And so, we're not the only ones, so we just have to work through all the changes, and eventually new muscle memory will kick in for us.
Sixth ward.
It's quiet in the sixth ward. A little update on the 40 mile an hour speeds on our 13s, trying to be, trying to get that reduced. I know RIG has applied the DOT to get that reduced from 40 to 30, all the way to Wendy's. So hopefully that'll get through, get done. That's all I have.
Seventh ward.
Just the trash pickup, we've all mentioned. Need to mention again, just remind people to.
It's not the trash, it's the recycle.
And recycle, but just everything in general, yeah. I told them, just be patient, it'll work out.
Yeah.
Eighth ward.
Eighth ward. Actually, I took my glass to the recycling center on Saturday, and believe it or not, that was a beehive.
Oh, yeah.
I guess a lot of people weren't really sure what day they're supposed to put things out, so they just took it to the recycling center. What I did find out, and I did share this with Kent before the meeting, is that some of these notices did not go out to all residents. Those that are actually rent from an apartment owner are not aware of the recycling ordinance that we currently have in place, and so they're not sure exactly what to do with their recyclables. And I believe there's going to be another notice going out by DPW, I would say, within the upcoming weeks. Hopefully, this should clear up some of the other issues ahead of time. But just be aware that you'll probably get phone calls from tenants as you funnel through this process. Sidewalks, mixed concerns at my ward. It was a good idea that we finally clamped down on some of the people that are not, doesn't do their due diligence in keeping the sidewalks clean. But on the flip side of that, people that do get out and clean their sidewalks off early just to have the plow come through and fill it up again. And the concern was, you know, how many times a day do I have to get out and do this? So I don't receive a notice.
Once in 20, once in 24 hours. And that's, that's all I have for the eighth ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I as well will touch upon recycling. So there are a couple of questions that came forward. So for clarification, we've been receiving numerous calls, not just older persons, but also in City Hall. Trash is still collected every week. There was some confusion about that. Trash will continually be collected weekly. And with regard to recycling, for those who may have missed the discussion, Council had a couple of sessions in the fall where this was discussed, and this was the only option where we would not increase the cost on the consumer, on people who participate in the Blue Bag Program. If we were to send another truck around, that would be a significant cost. If we were to allow glass to stay in the recycling stream, then we would have to take our recyclables out of the county on our own, and that would be a significant increase in cost as well. So their due diligence, we had a couple of people, Katie, Troy, who am I missing in terms of talking about this in the fall? But the discussion then, and the recommendation came forward to Council that in the interest of keeping costs manageable, this was the best solution. And we know that there will be some growing pains as we go through this. I did receive some questions because there was a potential change in what the county is doing with the recycling for the short term. We are still looking to collect glass the first full week of every month. We've co-mingled everything except for glass for the rest of the month. So we're sticking with the plan that has been put forward. And the question in terms of what is the county doing with recycling after they get it, we, we don't have influence or say over that. Now, the adjustments that we are making is due to what changes have been made with the county. So we are doing our best to make the adjustments and to not put an additional cost on the city taxpayer. So it's going to take a little bit of time, but I'm confident by the time we get to the summer, that if the county sticks with this plan, then we will be in a better place with regard to the glass and the other, the co-mingled recyclables. There will be stickers starting to get placed this week onto bins when people do not have, if they're not recycling appropriately. So in addition to glass not being collected outside of that first week, so glass should not be in the recycling bins unless it's the first full week of every month. Full week meaning, okay, Monday was February, full week is February, that's the first full week. There are other changes, and the flyers did go out, and Tom, yeah, the flyers went out to people who have, who received a water and sewer billings, with the intention of, we want the property owners to be responsible, because they're the ones that make the decisions about who is collecting the trash and who is collecting the recyclables. So the Blue Bag Program is an opt-in program. People do not have to use the Blue Bag Program. They are welcome to go and find a private hauler if they would like. And we know that in terms of landlords, there are many that do use a program other than Blue Bag, private haulers. So we thought the easiest, best way was to distribute to the property owners, making sure that they get the notice, and then they are responsible for maintenance of their property. They need to pass that along to their tenants as well. And there are many examples. There's a building next door. We, we didn't see the need to send every tenant in that building a notice about the changes to the recycling program. That's something that needs to be done by the property owner. So some people did not get these, but every property owner should have. And yes, we are going to have a second notice coming around, and we'll appreciate people's patience. The calls are coming in, I fully expect them to keep coming in. We, we didn't want this change or work for this change, but we will make this change. Mayor's report, I've been asked to read a proclamation in deference to its content. Katie Solomon, would you do the honors?
Actually, since my voice is not so reliable these days, I will catch you to it.
So, this is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of the United States. Whereas the League of Women Voters was founded on February 14, 1920, as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragists movement at the National American Women's Suffrage Association, and whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibility as voters. And whereas, the success of the effort and the tireless efforts of over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization. And whereas, the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access, and for free and fair elections, civil rights, children, community health, and education. And whereas, the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters. And whereas, the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. And whereas, the League believes that active, engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy, now therefore be proclaimed February 14, 2020, as Women's Voting Rights Day.
Would Council like to recognize Joe Schaefer?
Yes.
I was always that, that's why. I'd like to present the mayor with our biggest, best pin in honor of the 100th anniversary.
Yay!
So, Joe, are women only allowed to join the League of Women Voters?
No, we are nonpartisan, non-gender specific. Anyone who'd like to pay the dues in term of meetings, perfectly welcome. Thank you very much. We ask all elected officials to acknowledge the fact that we do sponsor the forums. We make it very clear that we present those information to all voters, and anyone who'd like to join us, we will gladly accept your money.
And I asked that question, no, I think my dues are up, because I am or have been a member.
I got you once.
And as stated, the League of Women Voters has been very integral in terms of helping people to get to know the candidates and helping candidates get to know the people. So, thank you and congratulations to the League. Next up, we have Minutes, approval of the Minutes from January 21, 2020. We have motion to consider filing said minutes. Bill Carpenter, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. Any concerns about the Minutes? Very none. All those in favor of filing the Minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item number one, consideration of local law to amend Article 11, Sections 31 and 32 to prohibit turns from Rotten Avenue onto Otter Creek Place. Motion to consider.
Salute.
Bruce Tyler, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Do you have something you want to say first, Mike?
Tom?
Tom, yeah, I'm sorry. Tom Michaels, Mr. Michaels.
Now, this, this is in your ward, is that correct?
Yes.
My one concern is, is it going to create another problem, other than solving the one I can?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, I had, I had three, three people contacting me on this issue. One person was in favor of it, wholeheartedly. One person who's lived on Otter Creek for a long time, could live with it, they were happy they could go left or right when they came out of their driveway, and they understood the safety issue. Another person understood the safety issue, but also brought the concern that we heard here tonight about potential backup of traffic. So, I can't say that there's a wholehearted consensus in the third ward, but, but for me, the safety overrides the other potential issues. So I am going to support this. I know there are going to be some people unhappy with me, but that's going to happen no matter which way I would have voted, and I would prefer to err on the side of caution and safety. I do think we need to take a look and keep an eye open and see what's going to happen with potential for traffic backing up, people turning left at Groton Town. I could see that that could be, I haven't thought about it, I mean, I do turn left there a lot, but I don't have people cut through Otter Creek. So that's something I think we definitely have to keep an eye on. If, if it may come up that that's an issue we have to deal with in the future, then we have to deal with it. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. Okay. Thank you. Sure. Further discussion.
I agree. I, I don't use Otter Creek. Years ago, my son delivered papers on Otter Creek and up on Little Cul-de-sac, Pinecrest if it is. And it was scary to have him out walking around. One of us always went with him, because it just seems...
No, we are nonpartisan, nongender specific, anyone who would like to pay the dues in two meetings, perfectly welcome, thank you very much. We ask all elected officials to acknowledge the fact that we do sponsor the forums, we make it very clear that we present those information to all voters, and anyone who would like to join us, we will gladly accept your money.
And I asked that question, no, I think my dues are up because I am or have been a member.
I got you once.
And as stated, the League of Women Voters has been very integral in terms of helping people to get to know the candidates and helping candidates get to know the people. So thank you and congratulations to the League. Next up, we have minutes, approval of the minutes from January 21st, 2020, we have a motion to consider filing said minutes. Bill Carpenter, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion, any concerns about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number one, consideration of local law to amend Article 11, Sections 31 and 32 to prohibit turns from Rotten Avenue onto Otter Creek Place, motion to consider.
Absolvent.
Bruce Tyler, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. Do you have something you want to say first, Mike?
Tom?
Tom, yeah, I'm sorry, Tom Michaels, Mr. Michaels.
Now, this is in your ward, is that correct?
Yes.
My only concern is, is it going to create another problem other than solving the one I can?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, I had, I had three, three people contacting me on this issue. One person was in favor of it, wholeheartedly. One person who's lived on Otter Creek for a long time, could live with it, they were happy they could go left or right when they came out of their driveway, and they understood the safety issue. Another person understood the safety issue, but also brought the concern that we heard here tonight about the potential backup of traffic. So I can't say that there's a wholehearted consensus in the third ward, but, but for me, the safety overrides the other potential issues. So I am going to support this, I know there are going to be some people unhappy with me, but that's going to happen no matter which way I would have voted, and I would prefer to err on the side of caution and safety. I do think we need to take a look and keep an eye open and see what's going to happen with the potential for traffic backing up, people turning left at Groton and Towne. I could see that that could be, I haven't thought about it, I mean, I do turn left there a lot, but I don't have people cut through Otter Creek, so that's something I think we definitely have to keep an eye on. If it may come up that that's an issue we have to deal with in the future, then we have to deal with it. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I agree, I, I don't use Otter Creek. Years ago, my son delivered papers on Otter Creek and up on Little Cul-de-sac, Pine Crest if it is, and it was scary to have him out walking around. One of us always went with him because it just seems like there was a lot of attention for danger, especially with a kid who wasn't always, you know, paying attention to that, expecting cars to follow the rules of the road, didn't think he had to pay attention. And I also agree that the road is very tight at the turn of Broadway and Rotten Ave, so we'll have to see what happens there. Maybe we can change the traffic signal and do some adjustments, I'm going to vote for this as well. But it's, it's not an easy one.
No, you're right, and there is a section there that has no sidewalks at all, and wouldn't make any sense to put sidewalks in because who would take care of them in the wintertime? If we are going to file two on this, I think we should consider the signage.
Yeah.
We can walk in a certain, certain direction.
And Mrs. Pace, please draw on that.
Yeah. Bless you.
Yeah, I think, I think Chris had a good idea last week, or two weeks ago, when he said we're going to put the flashing, no entry signs there, I think that's a good idea. Because again, this has been, you know, for those of us that have lived in Portland for a long time, I have lived around my life, but I've been here for 30 some years, and you know, again, you have a habit, so it's, I think it's good that we have something flashy, a lot of people don't know you can't do this. And it's going to be changed, and I get where people are coming from, we'll change, I understand that. You have something on it that you've been doing for 40, 50, 60 years, and then it changes, it's, it's difficult. But again, I come back to the safety issue.
I agree with Bruce on the safety issues, and I really, really foresee issues at Groton and Towne that won't be able to be addressed with the extra traffic because it's another tight intersection. I would never change this to make it work. It's going to come back and bite us all bad, I know safety's first, but I don't know if we should look, have something looked into first to see if it does come back, if something needs to be changed, it can be done. I'm not so sure it could be done. But then what are you going to do, take, you know, make Otter Creek go back to the other lane? You know, that's not going to work either, but I really see trouble at that intersection.
I would agree, this is a really tough, tough situation, but I, based on the information that was provided to us last week about, or to the last meeting about Otter Creek, it does seem like there is no place for more sidewalks, there's no place for another lane. Just makes sense that, you know, for safety, we need to put that first, but I would agree if we could look for something to, to address with Groton and Towne, I think that could cause some issues if we're not careful.
Maybe as this goes into place, we could have a car count, or, you know, whatever the police could do to be already on top of that issue with the, at the intersection with the light, just to be proactive and see how it's going.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you can change the timing on the light, I would think that you could, so maybe instead of only three cars going through there, maybe if the light changes green, so six or seven cars have time to go through there. I, I don't know, but that, that to me would be the first place that we probably think about.
I'd really like to see us do something on this tonight, but you know, I really think we should, you know, at least postpone it for another meeting and really talk to Chris, get a plan together, what we can do, because it's going to start, you know, he just said 400 to 1,000 cars. You know, probably all 1,000 cars are where people live down that road, so it's all, now you're sending them all up Groton Ave?
Yeah.
It's just, it's up to you guys, but I really, that's my personal. I mean, spend this way for years, I mean, I don't think in a couple of weeks it's going to be the end of the world, I mean, I hope it's not.
So the idea is to postpone the vote till the next meeting, but the intention of having...
So Chris can be aware, he maybe give us suggestions, there's stuff we can do for the extra traffic, so they're more comfortable than, I mean, you know, I'm only one vote.
What's your issue, how you feel about that?
Well, I don't know, I hadn't thought about postponing this for two weeks, I mean, Chris seemed to be in favor of this when he came through here, so I have a hard time thinking he hasn't really thought this through, and knowing that there's going to be more traffic at Towne and Groton. I had anticipated, you know, as, as much backup as some people think is going to happen, but I don't know, that could be, I don't have a, you know, we won't know until we make the change. I would not be in favor of postponing this for two weeks because I don't know if that's going to change really, well, ultimately, I'm going to vote anyhow because it's, it's a safety issue, so that's not going to change. I think Chris, you know, starting tomorrow, can be contacted and say, okay, this is something we need to look at, because he's going to put the signs up, and again, I don't, I'm not a traffic expert by any means, so I don't know what they can do with the, the timing of that light and how that impacts everything else, but I would think that'd be the first thing to look at, is the timing of that light.
I agree.
And then some people, you know, have to take, they might start taking alternative routes as they're going around, especially at busy times, I mean, that's, that's what I would do in some instances, so. I guess I would say that's not postponed because it's not going to change, it's not going to get any safer between here and two weeks from now, so that's not going to change.
Further discussion? Hearing none, since it's a local law, make sure that we're getting it, let's go. Roll call, vote, ayes in favor, nays against, first ward?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Third?
Aye.
Four, fifth?
Aye.
Six?
Aye.
Seven?
Aye.
Eight?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. And if we'll take a little bit of time, have to file the local law with the state, get the signs and put them up, and yes, our superintendent of public works is aware, and this was a recommendation from the state, so moving forward in terms of next steps, Paul's in his court to make sure that we're making appropriate adjustments.
Talk to Chris tomorrow, I'd be glad to call him for us, but maybe I ought to get a counter out now.
Yeah.
At least look into the, the timing of the intersection there.
Right.
13 seconds, a left turn only lane, the light is on for 13 seconds.
Not great. It is extremely...
Colonel, you know, this, I, you do it? Yeah. Have this conversation.
All right. Also, can you change, it's going to be like, you know, there's a light change of 26 seconds.
Did not ask, but is it warranted, it'll need to, so that'll be part of the conversation.
So you see a good way to put that in?
Going to put it into the experts' hands and let the expert make a recommendation.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks, Mayor. Very good. Number two, resolution approved a special event application along with other required applications for celebration Saturday, February 29th, from noon to 5 p.m. Motion to consider, Cat McCarthy, second, Tom Michaels, discussion, and the director? Tim Bennett is here, coordinator.
I am, good afternoon, or good evening, everyone, I should say, do you have any questions for me as far as the event goes?
Make sure to take a, burn the ball with this one, thank you.
Yeah, so I see eight people here, I want to see eight spoons. All right, but I look forward to seeing everyone on the, on the 29th, February 29th, it's a leap year this year. Just to throw this in, the Portland Chamber of Commerce, I saw something they're doing, they're doing a special thing, it's like a giving, a giving thing where you're doing something nice and whatnot, and they want you to share it on social media, there should be thousands of people downtown that day, I mean, that'd be great, you know, just seeing a bunch of good things being done downtown, whether it's visiting a cafe that's down there, maybe giving a big tip. Maybe seeing somebody walking, buying their spoon, maybe, I don't know, buying somebody's gas, just create an environment of giving, and I think that would really be, be great, you know, not just that day, but I mean, we can do things like that more often, so, boom, there we go. All right, thank you all.
Are there any major changes with this year's event?
Um, no, no major changes, I mean, you're going to see more and more on it as we keep getting closer, the Facebook page for it will be released tomorrow, I'm going to be going on foot, walking around Portland, speaking with business owners starting tomorrow. But you are going to see a lot of good things, all of it will be fully pushed, and not just pushed by, you know, my other business phone flicks or a Portland Voice, I will, you know, share it with Evan over at the Portland stand, or shoot a rent to Travis, or X101 was here, but they're, they're gone right now. But, you know, whoever, whoever is around and will answer an email, they'll, they'll, they'll get it, you know, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope to see everyone there, okay?
Excellent. Fun event, great way to break the winter doldrums. Further discussion?
Question, is there a website that people can go to to find out?
That's good that you said that, there originally was a celebration website, but the downtown partner, Portland Downtown Partnership currently did not have access to that when I made that purchase, so a lot of it will be just shared on social media. I am fin, I am finalizing something that you'll, that you will see something on, I mean, I imagine by me sharing that press release and you'll see the flyers and whatnot, you, I will be sharing it with Evan, and Evan said he'd get things out, so you will see it in print too. You will see, you will more than likely hear about it on the radios, it's, I mean, unless I'm missing something, it should be the biggest thing that day in Portland County, if the other media outlets aren't covering it, I don't know what's going on, you know, so...
Could we put it on our website? Is there a reason we can't put that on our website?
You should, because it's going to bring people downtown, it's going to get people active, I mean, it's not like they're just coming and getting spoons. People might come and see family, they might, who knows, somebody along might come, they might get a hotel, they might, like I said, they might see what Frosted is, because it might not have been there when they were there.
Right.
You know, so, to me, you know, stop by Bernard's, get a shirt, who knows, you know?
Okay.
Do you have, do you have a law ball and things like that for it?
Yeah, there's, there's everything, yeah.
You know, you should, you should send electronically to the city so we can get it on our webpage, you know, people can see it right there when they, when they visit our webpage.
So tomorrow, you know what, even better, tomorrow when I come by, I'll bring a registration sheet, and maybe the city will put it in the chili, right? Wouldn't that be nice? But all jokes aside, I'll, I'll personally come down and I'll, I'll bring it, and I'll have an electronic copy.
I mean, it's just another venue for you to get the word out.
Beautiful, I love it. And hopefully everyone carefully gets here, uses a sidewalk, everyone has a good time, it's going to be great.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good. Number three, resolution approve a special event application along with other required applications for Shakespeare in the Park, August 16th, 14th through 16th, and August 21st through the 23rd of this year, and they are from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Motion to consider, Cat McCarthy, second, Katie Solomon, discussion.
Is that, is that a Suggit?
Yes, it was last year.
I'm just curious.
Yep.
Is this where it is?
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number four, resolution waive fees for the special event application portion, Shakespeare in the Park, motion to consider, Katie Solomon, second, Cat McCarthy, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number five, consideration of resolution to approve the reappointment of Elizabeth Wallen-Brown as the city historian, motion to consider, Troy Beckwith, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number six, resolution approve the appointment of John Bush to the Environmental Advisory Committee, motion to consider, Jackie Chapman, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number seven, resolution approve the reappointments on the attached list, and it is Sharon Stevens of Cable Commission, Historic and Architectural Commission would be Karina Murphy and Chris Barnes, Landscape and Design, we have Teresa Quell, Planning Commission, Chris Ryan, Jim Reeners, Joe McMahon, and the Public Safety DPW Commission, Keith Bangor. So motion to consider, Katie Solomon, second, Bruce Tyler, discussion.
I, I just want to say thanks to all these folks for volunteering to do this, to do this, and part of our, part of our community this way, it's fantastic, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And we do have a vacancy in the Public Safety DPW, so if we have anybody who is interested, you can submit an application online, or give us a call, we can give you more information about what that entails. Item number eight, consideration of resolution to lift the hiring fees to fill an anticipated vacancy in the fire department, motion to consider, Tom Michaels, second, Troy Beckwith, All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number nine, resolution commence the hiring process to fill two anticipated firefighter position vacancies subsequent to promotional process specific to shift captain and captain of training, or otherwise known as MTO. Motion to consider, Bill Carpenter, second, Bruce Tyler, discussion.
Chief, could you just explain the, the process of why we got here on this little bit? I'm, I'm in favor of this, I just not sure I understand how it came about, the way it
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So for you, I'll back up a little bit. Starting this, I've received Captain Dave Jensen's letter for intended retirement effective March 30th. So with that, he is currently serving in the training office, the municipal training officer where I put him after Chief Glover retired. So he's been serving in that capacity, and he'll be retiring. My anticipation is to, or desires to promote the captain to that position, and subsequently have a vacancy as a firefighter position at the bottom if we move that up. We've had long-term vacancy, so there's two firefighters. The reason why I bring you here tonight is February 27th, the recruit firefighter training class starts at the Fire Academy, and I'd really like to get these two into the class if they need to go to the recruit class, so we don't prolong this because it may be fall before I can get them on and get them trained. And getting them trained sooner is best for the department, so we don't have the delay of getting them onboard, additional costs for that, so that's why it kind of comes together like that.
So one firefighter with a captain, another is a long-standing vacancy, that is placed? Thank you, Chief, I appreciate the, okay?
Chief, quick question, what would the official hiring date be?
The hiring date for both of them, I would like to do, I believe the 25th would be the day, would be official date for that, I'll confirm that and make sure, but it would not be more than a week before I send them away, but we do have some preparatory work we have to do before we send them, but within a week's timeframe of that. And the promotion for the captain will not take effect until Captain Jensen leaves on 30th, so it'll be the first week. I really want to get going with the two firefighters.
When will the promotion take effect? I didn't hear that.
Um, promotion will take effect April 1st.
Oh, okay.
Chief, now these fire academies or police academies, are there only certain times during a year or once a year, right?
Twice a year typically, and there's two, there's two classes running this spring, and one of them's already started, the second one starts the 27th, and it's, and Wayne's begged to hold two spots there, and hopefully he's got a little, well, he has weight, but he's trying to hold those two positions, so they're holding them for us.
Okay.
So I'd appreciate a favorable response.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Number 10, resolution recognize and appropriate $2,804.32 in reimbursements to uniform and safety line, motion to consider, Bill Carpenter, second, Katie Solomon, discussion, and that's in the police department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number 11, consideration of resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the town of Portlandville, and this is with regard to youth bureau services, motion to consider, Bill Carpenter, second, Cat McCarthy, discussion.
This is pretty much you over here, is it? Something, this is a big change.
John, has anything changed in this program?
Uh, the responsibilities have remained the same. It is a standard contract that we've had with the town of Portlandville for many years. Good news, me and Mayor met with Supervisor Tupper before his departure, and it was a 2% increase. I think we'll be four, we're going to ask for that annually, so when I'm guessing, it makes Mac's job a little bit easier when it comes to budgeting and revenue. Pretty straightforward, it's a good working relationship with the town.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Contract aside, John. Number 12- Number 12, resolution authorize the mayor to enter to an agreement with the Portland Fire Department Board of Engineers. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Troy Beckwith, discussion. The Board of Engineers represents the volunteer firefighters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And number 13, consideration.
You know, hold on a second there. And also, I want to thank the volunteer firemen as well, they've got a tough job, and there's a lot of training to come, and they're used to it back in the day, so, yeah, it's pretty committed, if you respond until it's called, so, that's all.
Still 40 hours, Wayne? Pardon me? 40 plus?
Yeah, 40 plus.
Number 13, consideration of local law to amend Section 107 in the city code, changing rate and fee for registration of vacant buildings. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Bruce Tyler, discussion.
One step. One step, one step forward, so, try to get a handle on these things, so I appreciate
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening?